Humanity, the family nature that's going on here, or things that are difficult, by the way, that aren't very barbaric in terms of the physicality, but when you see a mother being torn away from her children and somebody's response is have a meal and you'll forget about them, that hurts because we care, and that was our objective in every moment, to humanize these very dehumanizing moments in the history of slavery.
Just in our last 30 seconds here, but I'm wondering, given the response to it, the very positive response, do you think this signals a new openness to looking at difficult parts of our history?
I think it's an openness to looking at our history and looking at history as not just being African-American history or white American history. This is our history, and to move forward in it, we've got to learn, we've got to grow, and I'm very gratified that people are willing to sit and learn.
John Ridley is screenwriter of 12 Years a Slave. Thanks so much.
Thank you for having me.
You can find the full list of this year's nominations, plus we've designed a poll where you pick the Oscar winners, and we'll see how your choices stack up against the academies. All that's on Art Beat.
16th, 2014 Capitol Planning Commission meeting to order. I have the role, please.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And Chairperson Ruth.
Here.
Tonight, our meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8, and it's being recorded to be replayed at 12 noon on Saturday, following the meeting on Community Television of Santa Cruz County, Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. You can also view the meetings on the city's website, and our technician tonight is Victor Herman. As a reminder, if you could please turn off your cellphones during the meeting, and if you do come up to speak at the podium, please sign your name so we have it for the record. Okay? Our first item tonight under New Business, oh, we have to do the pledge allegiance, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, our first item under New Business is the election of a new chair and vice chair, and we'll open the floor for nominations.
Chairperson Ruth, I'd like to nominate Gail Ortiz for the position of chair.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I would like to, is that all right?
Yeah.
Did you have something to say? I'd like to nominate Linda Smith for the position of vice chair.
Okay, all second. We have a second then to both nominations? Yes. Okay, no further nominations? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, and according to the new rules, we have to announce that the vote carried 4-0 with no opposition. Gail? It's all yours.
Do you want to sit here?
All right, so the next item on the agenda tonight are committee appointments. We have appointments to the Traffic and Parking Commission and the Art and Cultural Commission. It's my recollection that we already discussed Commissioner Graves being the traffic and parking representative.
Good.
Okay, and...
I'm currently the representative on the Art and Cultural Commission and would be more than willing to stay. Is that okay with everyone?
Okay, how about a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we keep our current appointments and carry them on.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Is that all I need to do for that?
Yep.
Okay. There's a new, for those of you out in the audience, there's a new California rule about stating votes verbally, so we're going to try to comply with that. The next item on the agenda are additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additions, Madam Chair.
What else? And then we're on to public comments, and that's the section of the agenda where we ask that you come up and speak to us about anything that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you've come to talk to us about something that is not agendized, now's your time. I think I recognize all the players out there, and nobody's, everybody's here for something, so we'll move on then. Commissioner, comments?
Nope.
Okay, staff?
No staff comments.
All right, great. Approval of the minutes of the November 21st Joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting, and the general, for the general plan. And we also have, this is, we'll do two and one, we also have the December 5th Draft Planning Commission minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions to those? If not, can I have a motion?
So move approval of both, both sets of minutes?
Is there a second? There's not too many of us these days.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain from the December 5th approval because I was absent at that meeting.
All right, so there is a vote of three ayes and one abstention. Motion carries. The next item on the calendar is the consent calendar, and these items are generally considered in one, they're considered routine and they are voted on in one vote. If anyone would like to pull any of these items, both the commissioners and the audience tonight have the ability to do that. Commissioners, are there any consent items you would like to pull?
I have none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to pull one of the consent calendar items? If not, I will entertain a motion for that.
I make a motion that we move forward the consent items.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. So those are items 4A and B. So if you're here for 4A and B, you can go home. I don't see anyone going home who's here for 4A and B. Next on the agenda are our public hearings, and the first public hearing is on 1730 Wharf Road. It's a design permit and coastal development permit for a new single-family home in the R1 AR Single Family Automatic Review Zoning District. There are two of us here tonight who need to recuse ourselves from this, and since that will only leave two people remaining, we need to do a straw vote on this. So I can see our fearless leader ready with the straws. I never have luck when I draw the first one. I'm going to let the measure and draw.
What is it? I got the long straw, which is what?
We didn't decide beforehand what the long straw means.
I think the short straw would participate.
Okay, great. So the short straws got to come up and lead the meeting.
And I've got to read something into the, for this procedure, so. State law prohibits public officials from acting on matters which, in which they have certain economic interests. Two planning commissioners have disclosed disqualifying conflicts of interest in decisions related to the public hearing item 1730 Wharf Road. Without these conflicted members, there is no quorum. Under the rule of necessity, a public official may participate in a decision to the extent that participation is legally required. Here, the participation of two conflicted commissioners, of one conflicted commissioner is legally required in order to achieve a quorum and enable the commissioner to act on this item. Therefore, the commissioner may invoke the rule of necessity to bring back one commissioner as is necessary to have a quorum. The commissioner who will be brought back will be randomly selected by the drawing of straws. The commissioner that randomly selected the shortest straw is Commissioner Ortiz. Accordingly, Commissioner Ortiz may participate in the decision under the rule of necessity. Oh, I'm sorry. So shortest straw is Commissioner Smith. Accordingly, Commissioner Smith may participate in the decision under the rule of necessity. The other conflicted commissioners may recuse themselves and leave the room before the discussion, the item is discussed. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Right. So for everybody, this is the first time that I will have led any portion of a meeting, so bear with me. The way that the public hearings work, we have the staff presentation first, and then an opportunity for the public to speak before the planning commissioners then review their comments, and then we make a decision, close the public hearing, and then we make a decision. So with that, Katie, do we have a staff presentation on this item, please?
Okay, thank you. Before you tonight is an application for a new single-family home at 1730 Wharf Road. This requires a coastal development permit as well as a design permit for the single-family home. The home is listed in the R1 zoning district, and as you can see from the slide, the Shadowbrook Restaurant is located adjacent to the property. It is, the home is situated in a visitor-serving with Shadowbrook right next door, but also single-family residents surrounding the visitor-serving area. This is a view of the street perspective. There is a single-family home that you can see to the right, and then the lot is in between the single-family home and the Shadowbrook. You can see the sign for Shadowbrook slightly, under the tree to the left. This is an overview of the zoning districts, so again, R1 is surrounding the area and the visitors-serving on the neighboring property. I did want to point out here that there are some differences in zoning in new development there. Within the R1 district, the height limit is 25 feet, which for the visitor-serving is 30. Also setbacks within visitor-serving, there's typically more discretion in the setbacks because they're established through the ark and site review, except when a building is located next to a residential, then there's an automatic setback of 10 feet. There are existing non-conforming circumstances with the neighboring lot because they do have improvements within that 10-foot setback where the trolley runs up and down the Shadowbrook. So, and the setbacks in the R1 are, the side yard is 10% of the lot front edge, and the rear yard is 20% of the length of the lot, and the front yard setback is 15 feet. So more on the proposal, there's a required maximum, or not, there's a maximum floor area ratio of 48%. The proposed floor area is 44, sorry, that's 3,717 square feet. This project requires four spaces for parking, and one must be covered. The proposal is for four spaces total, two which are covered within the garage. This is a site plan, and you can see there are planters along Wharf Road to identify how the relationship of the site plan. The home is situated towards the front of the lot, on the least steep portion of the lot. Again, you can see the single-family residents next door, and also the Shadowbrook, the There's a scenic easement that goes through the property, and that line that you see there is the edge of the scenic easement. No development is allowed within the, within the scenic easement. There's also, it's part of a riparian, there's the riparian canopy below in which there's a 35-foot requirement for a setback from the edge of the riparian canopy, because it's located within the SoCal Creek riparian corridor. The applicant had hired Cypress Environmental to come in and do a riparian delineation. The 35-foot setback was required within his delineation, he also made four recommendations for the, for staff to put as conditions of approval, one of which is the 35-foot setback, and that mirrors the requirement of the SoCal Creek riparian corridor, sensitive lands within the municipal code. Also, construction should be limited from April 15th to October 15th. Requirements for the silt fence to be upkept throughout the process, and also storm water drainage plan, which has been submitted. Here, I'm showing the setbacks on the plan. There's a four-foot, five-inch setback on either side, which is consistent with the 10% requirement, and a 15-foot setback on the front yard, and 20 feet for the garage. I just wanted to show the relationship to the neighboring property. The trolley building and the rail are right along that property line. So by code, if that were to be developed today, there'd be a required 10-foot setback, but this is existing on the property, and it's existing but non-conforming. The exterior materials proposed are stucco, painted wood trim, and fiberglass-framed windows and doors, and the coloring. The zone height is 25 feet. It's interesting on this lot because it is a very steep lot, so as you go down with grade, it, the building is within the 25-foot height limit, but as it goes down the grade, the building is stepped. There's a total of five stories within the structure, but it does step with grade to stay within that 25-foot limit. These are side elevations, so if you have any comments and want to relate to these later, we can come back. There's two decks off of the back of the property, as you can see, and then there's also green roofs incorporated into the design, which I'll show another slide on. There was a landscape plan submitted, and within that, the one thing I want to point out is that there's coffee berry proposed along that, the property line, well, on both property lines, but to help with the screening between the commercial use next door and the development on this property. This is showing the green roofs, so there's two proposed green roofs on the property. These will not be accessible through a door, so they won't count as a deck. They won't have the ADA, or, sorry, not ADA, they won't have the required railings for occupancy as well, so they will be truly a roof deck that cannot be accessed for pleasure. And then I just, I went over to the Shadowbrook and took some pictures of what you can see from their property, and, because I thought that would be helpful in the discussion tonight where the, we did have some public comment in the form of a letter that you each received. This is the existing home that's next door. The rear facade of the proposed building does not go beyond that facade of, the rear facade of the neighboring structure, so you wouldn't see it extend out any further than that. And then I was lucky enough to have the trolley go by, so I thought I'd just show you what that looks like in comparison when it's going by, so. Staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission approve the application 13169 based on the conditions and findings for approval. Thank you.
And I believe this is the time when, excuse me, if there are any questions of staff? We can ask those now?
Yes.
Any questions of staff?
What about a grading plan? Is that going to be part of the working drawings if this application is approved? Erosion control, I know there's some conditions in there for that.
Yes, there, there are, the grading plan, I believe, one of, there was a, there were some aspects of a grading plan that were included maybe towards the last two pages in the...
Engineering plans?
The engineering plans, but full, what else were you looking for in terms of a grading plan for?
I'm just curious as to what the conditions are in regards to bringing the spoils up the hill and getting equipment down there, and, yeah, what's, what's going to occur on that slope during construction to remove that material and?
Yeah, during the ark and site review, Mark Wheeler brought to the applicant's intention that we are definitely going to have to have some type of management plan in place because of the narrowness of the road and during removal of soils and excavating, so. But I do think if you'd like any of the, if you'd like to make the management plan address anything, we should add it as a condition.
More specific.
Yeah, more specifically as a condition.
I think under item 10 in the conditions, it talks to having a drainage plan, a grading, sediment, erosion control plan prior to permit.
Any other comments, Ms.?
No.
I just have a couple of comments myself. First, the address called into question, 1730 or 1740, we just want to make sure that that gets nailed down correctly before any permits are issued. And I wanted to clarify if I can the setback requirements. For this specific lot, what is the calculated setback requirement? Is it eight feet, 10 feet?
Okay, so the, for the side yard? Mm-hmm. So the, it's 10% of the 40, it's 44 feet.
Point two or something.
Point two, so I'd say it's four and a half feet.
Four and a half feet, okay.
Yeah, and that's rounding up by an inch or so, so.
Okay. And that doesn't change even though we've got an existing non-conforming on the other side?
It does not, no.
I think, those were all the questions that I have at this time. So now it's the opportunity for the public to speak. Is the applicant here? And please do sign in and state your name for the record.
My name is William Fisher. I'm the architect, and with me is Courtney Hughes, who has, is a designer of this building, and I'm extremely proud to have her working for me. We've got, received a letter from the Shadowbrook, from Mr. Burke, and we were prepared to discuss that letter, and we've answered those questions, I think. The thing you see on the screen right now is a picture from Wharf Road, and the yellow house in front is existing, and then you see where the proposed house would be beyond that. It's going to be very much shielded by the plant material that's going to be there and going to remain there, and then you see where the driveway just kind of peaks through there. Is it possible to go to the next slide? Okay, this one shows the view from the Shadowbrook, and the red line is the path of the cable car, and Courtney, maybe you could explain exactly what you're seeing here.
Sure. This just shows at the top, we have the structure of the building for the top landing, and then at the bottom just shows where the cable car's bottom landing is, so you can get a sense of the full path of travel and where.
Yeah, if we can go to the next slide, too, that's interesting.
The shrubs that are in the landscape plan to be planted in between the Shadowbrook and our proposed house are growed between 15 to 20 feet. These aren't exact representations of what those shrubs are, but they're a dense, they're a dense shrub that I actually just discussed in more depth with our landscape architect. He gave me some more information on them if anybody needs more. He said they grow between 10 to 15 feet, and they're chosen because they will create a dense barrier between properties.
Yeah, excuse me. Our intention is to plant a four-and-a-half-foot wide jungle in between the trolley and the building, and we're looking for whatever can grow as quickly as possible and will make everybody happy, and we would like it to be dense and high also. That's our intention. And so we're not tied to the coffee berry trees necessarily, although those were suggested by our landscape architect, but we're willing to, you know, use whatever the city decides that we should use.
Also, the next slide shows where the existing yellow house is, just so you can get a sense of our, the profile of this proposed building in relationship to that existing one.
Could I approach the bench?
You know, I don't know what the rules are in that one.
See, this, the red line is the new building, and this is the existing big yellow house, and where this is the railroad.
Bill, that particular type of tree, a coffee berry tree, do you know how tall they get?
Between 15 to 20 feet.
And so how big is the trunk diameter at that point?
I don't know. I've just seen it from those commercials on TV.
Okay, because I, my concern would be root damage to the trolley, the bed, the railroad, the track bed of the trolley, and even perhaps the foundation of the house, when those trees get large and then they have to be removed.
We'd be happy to change them to whatever species that you would deem appropriate.
That was the species that was chosen by the landscape architect, and he was aware of how much space there was there and where the building was going to be and the fact that it was going to be going down. So my assumption is that he chose something knowing that the root system wouldn't be a problem, but I'm not as familiar with the plants and what their systems are like, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight.
And I just have a quick question. The current brush or shrubbery that's there, is that going to be, be removed, and is it, the coffee berry is going to replace that, or are you going to leave that?
Yes. Yeah, just because of construction, we're going to need to remove everything to build a building. That was one of the... That was one of the points that was brought out in the letter from Mr. Burke, and that, constructing a building of this type, I know it was mentioned in the letter that this is a five-story building, well, that's kind of not an accurate representation. It is five levels, but they go down, not up. At no point is the building taller than the 25 feet, and it's only at the 25-foot at it, the topmost level. Most of the height of it is, is less than that as it goes down the hill. And the, so the, building the foundation on this would be no more difficult than building the, a basement foundation of this type on any, on any hillside. We do it every day, and, you know, we would use, during construction, of course, our structural engineer during those, in the working drawings phase, will produce full structural plans showing excavation techniques and how we would do that, so, you know, we don't really need any extraordinary engineering to do this type of building. Let's see, is that the last of the slides?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let me, if I could maybe go through this letter, these were, so we showed the relationship to, to the cable car track to the home, and there was a suggestion that we consider changing the building from stucco to concrete in order to lessen the sound of the cable car to the occupants inside our building. And I don't think we want to do that, because I'm, I think I can design the wall to, you know, lessen the sound, I mean, for our occupants of the, of the noise made by the cable car, and it would be extremely expensive for us to change the building into a concrete building for that purpose. Also, the, the letter suggests that we eliminate a window on our north side for that same reason, so our occupants would not have to look at the cable car, and we don't mind looking at the cable car, because we intend that that four-and-a-half feet, again, is full of dense vegetation, so we probably wouldn't see it anyway. The, there was a suggestion that the, our building be moved five feet toward the south, and I think this is kind of arbitrary, because the lot was approved, and was created by the city and approved, and by the city for, with these particular setbacks. It's a very narrow lot, and we have a very narrow, small house with four-and-a-half-foot setbacks on both sides, so it's really not feasible to move our building just, you know, more toward the south. I don't know that that would really accomplish anything. Again, our building is low, there's no openings with regard to a fixed glass window on that side, and what you see is going to be covered with trees, and our intention, and in the plan, I believe, is to cover the entire building with creeping fig, so it would, you would blend out, you wouldn't see this building after it, after the landscaping matures. Let's see here, okay, asked for a shoring plan. During construction drawing, we'll show whatever structural drawings we need to show how to, how to build this. I mean, again, this is not an extraordinary type of building to build, or an extraordinary foundation. So, I mean, we would provide whatever kind of structural drawings that Mr. Wheeler requires and our structural engineer requires. Lastly, the impacts of construction will be disruptive to the operation of the Shadow Brook, therefore, the, please require a building management plan to ensure a swift construction. Well, yeah, our intention is to do a swift construction. We haven't, again, considered that we would do anything unusual, and every job we do would have a building management plan, that's part of the way we schedule construction, so, we would share that with Mr. Wheeler and the building department as part of our procedures, but when we get to that point, certainly, we'll, we'll have our schedule and how it all plans to go. The one, the one thing I tried to do in the design of this, and Courtney and I worked on this from get-go, was that we would not do anything beyond what the letter of the law is, we would not ask for any variances or any, anything beyond what the absolute minimum requirements are for the lot, because our intention is to make this small, basically covered with green, and not be a problem for anybody.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant at this time?
No.
I have a couple. Has the contractor already been selected for the job?
No.
There is a window that was seen in one of the pictures, do you know what room that window is in?
It's in the living room, dining room level.
Okay.
So I'm an open floor plan, but probably would be the living room.
So the, the basement is completely underground?
Yes.
At the bottom? Oh, okay.
With the exception of some, you can-
Facing the creek.
Back to some of the elevations, from the east elevation, we can see it, but it just has some sliding glass doors that are kind of, we're going to take away the grade there.
Yeah, but it's basically dug in.
Oh, we can't hear? Sorry. When you speak, please speak into the mic, they can't-
From the, here, you can see it at the east elevation, that, those sliding glass doors at the bottom are the basement level, and that's, other than those doors, everything else is completely underground.
And my last question has to do with the grading at the driveway level, and it, it seems like from the drawings, it's going to be a pretty steep, down driveway to leave that sidewalk, you know, level out front, and that's already been considered?
Yeah, our, our intention there is to keep the sidewalk handicapped accessible, to not have any water problems at the street, to keep the water in the gutter, and to get down low to keep the height of the building down. So we, we, we dive down fairly steeply, although this is not as steep as some of them have designed, and that was the, that's the intention in that driveway, too. We wanted it to be a, a, a drive down to get into the garage rather than go straight in, and we're just trying to keep the building low.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's a lot of people that walk right along that sidewalk, and it, it gets pretty narrow in some spots with those, the planters where they're at and everything. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to, you know, be into the sidewalk area going down.
No, that was our point, is to try to keep the, we're not going to change the level of the sidewalk at all, it's just going to be exactly where it is right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And if there are any other members of the public that would like to speak, now's your chance.
My name's Steve Seary. I live across the river from all of this. I'm downhill of all of this. And up until five minutes ago, I didn't realize it's a five-story building being built on a creek side. I don't care about the house, I don't care about the development, I really don't care a lot about that. What I care about, this, Commissioner Ruth, Texan Piningo-Farnup, was the erosion control. Erosion is, if you look something up and down the creek, is an ongoing process, and some of the, the houses further up Wharf Road are heavily threatened by erosion right now. And I don't want to make, I just want to make an, have an assurance that, one, there's probably a soils engineer onboard with a soils tech during the backfill process that provides adequate compaction, that the weight of the building isn't too much for that creek side. I'm sure I may be reading Warren, and I'm not a constructor, I'm not a design team, I get that part. The house next to them, though, is definitely built on piers. It's not part of the creek side. And then further down the road is the, I gotta be careful, I don't want to, I really don't want to hinder other people's use of their property, but I'm sure they're going to want to build little paths and stairways down to the creek side, and that by itself will cause erosion issues. The reason why I'm still involved about the erosion issues, because if any of that creek slides down, that river's coming in my house, and that's what I'm most worried about. The coffee berry is wonderful, but you take out all of that shrubbery, that's what's holding that creek side. I watched the people to the south where that, the three-acre parcels at, they went through and shored up their road, and now they've caused the erosion because they dug into the hillside, helping, but caused themselves this minor problem. Kind of that action/reaction, and, like I said, I'm not a soils guy, but I have a pretty good idea, and these go back pretty tight, and good root structures need to be maintained, and good ecology needs to be maintained, so it doesn't have its, you know, once erosion gets its toehold, we're done. I'm done. I will no longer have a house, and that's what worries me the most. Beyond that, I think it's a great design, I think it's a cool design, somebody's got guts, somebody's going to make a fortune, but I just don't want all that creek side on my deck, if that makes sense.
I understand, that definitely makes sense. The engineering of the side of the, the hillside is handled by Stephen Public Works and gets verified in advance. Does the city have their own engineer that has looked at this as well?
When building permits are submitted, we do have a structural engineer on contract that reviews all those materials. It'll have to be reviewed by them and certified by a registered engineer.
A structural engineer's a good guy for building structures. A soils engineer is the guy to build soils.
And, you know, there's, there's very strict, you know, state, federal, and local stormwater and sedimentation regulations, which will have to be adhered to. Those also have to be certified by a registered engineer.
And geological engineer on the team for that?
You know, oftentimes, it's a, either a civil engineer or you have a geologic engineer. They typically have the same qualifications for a residence like this.
Okay.
Well, because of the slope, do they do the soil tests and seismic studies on it?
Typically, you wouldn't do seismic studies unless there was an active fault nearby or something that needed additional seismic protections. They went above, you know, California code requirements. We, you know, they'll, they'll look at the soils, the type of soils, how it expands, and then design the building accordingly, and make sure that there's appropriate compaction on site.
Is there a way we can address future erosion issues, i.e. future landscaping, removing the shrubbery, removing the root systems that is actually holding that soil together today?
Well, the, the one benefit of the project is it's located on a site that does have some environmental sensitivity, so the future property owner wouldn't have the right to go in and remove native vegetation in that area. So if they did that, they would be subject to a code action and re-vegetate in the area.
And that's pretty, that's pretty strictly enforced and watched?
Do we know if this is a spec house?
I don't believe it is.
Or is it going to be used by the Galeno family?
I'd have to defer to the applicant.
And a lot is listed for sale.
With approved plans, so I assume it to be a spec house.
Good point.
Thank you.
We'll have to look at the conditions when we get to that point and just make sure they're strong enough in that area to address the concern.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I'm writing you a letter. Excuse me. My name's Mike Clark, and I'm the property owner of the Shadow Brook, and I take my hat off to the architects. I think they've done a wonderful job, but I, I think there are some problems that could be addressed at this level that would greatly help the saleability of this house, because Bruce is looking to, to sell the lot with plans, and, and whoever builds this house, I think they could, they, if they built it as it is, it's my opinion, that it would be a nightmare for privacy and noise, and, and I think this could be overcome fairly, fairly easy, and I think Ted addressed, addressed the noise factor. You need mass to, to, to stop the noise, and that elevator's going all the time, they're, and the elevator's going to be traveling right by that window. I mean, it's, it's going to be five feet away from the window, going up and down all night long and people partying, and I, I don't think that window should be there, but that's neither here nor there. I think it would be, make the house more saleable if it wasn't there. And the other thing that would greatly help the noise factor is, is the, the two decks, the two decks that they have with railings coming out, if they could extend the wall further out, where, where the railing extends out, extend the wall out that far, because then people wouldn't be looking in those windows. Do you understand what I'm saying there? And that would greatly mitigate noise and the privacy factor. Then, my other big concern is, if you could throw up, I think it was the north, the north And my, this is my question to the architect. Is the, the-
Can we, can we go over here?
Sure.
You can do it, and not have to, it's just a little safer. This is north.
So, is this the cut into the ground, and it goes all the way down here?
Yes.
Okay, so here's, here, I'll go back to the mic.
That cut is, I'm just guessing, at least 20 feet down, so five feet away from the elevator. They're going to be cutting down 20 feet, and that elevator's on these old foundations, and I've got a, I've got real concern that they can properly shore that during their construction project. And, and let me tell you, all, all of, all of what you see underground, that's going to have to be concrete anyway, because that hillside is, although it's not wet this year, whenever there's rain, there's water coming out of that. We have sump pumps all over at the Shadow Brook to keep the water out, so that, everything that's underground there is going to have to be waterproofed on the back side, and probably have drainage on the back side, on the, on the cable car side, which will mean that they will not only be cutting down 20 feet, just five feet away from that cable car, they'll have to probably come in another foot to two to properly drain and waterproof, and that's getting real close to a critical thing. And that's the reason Ted suggested moving the house over five feet, because there's 15 feet between Galeno's other house and this house, and if you moved it over five feet, it would be on what is the property line, but it would still have 10 feet between the other house, and that would put 10 feet between the elevator, and it would make the construction a lot less precarious. And I know that would require a variance, but I tell you, we'd be cheering for that variance. So, those are my suggestions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mike?
My name is Ted Burke, I'm the business owner of the Shadow Brook Restaurant, and thank you for considering the letter that I wrote and asked- the letter that I wrote and asked to be distributed just a couple days ago. Um, I too am worried about, uh, erosion and, and, uh, the plan that will keep the foundation where it's supposed to be. I, during my term of ownership of the business, we witnessed a rather large slough off of the Galino lot, that, that lot right there. So large that it caused me to get a geological study of the Shadowbrook property to make sure that thing wasn't gonna creep over and take part of our hillside by our waterfalls, et cetera. So, the foundation plan, um, and believe I'm not an engineer, so I'm, I'm not saying this is what will happen, but you would think would need to be so substantial to have tiebacks into the hillside to keep it there. And, uh, four and a half feet is not a lot of area to, in my opinion, to successfully tie back such a, a large foundation on a wet hillside. That was, uh, one of the primary reasons for asking the property to be moved, uh, more to the center so that it's equal distant from, uh, the two existing structures, that is the Shadowbrook cable car and Mrs. Galino's home. Uh, other issues that, um, Mike did mention that I'd like to mention is the coffee berry. I, um, I hope it will, will do well there. I do have some questions about it. I don't know much about coffee berry, but I did go to the internet to look it up, and it said it does well in, uh, low and light, uh, moderate light. Uh, but this is a north-facing wall, it's not gonna get much light at all, so I don't know how, if it will be successful in that kind of lighting conditions, but I do think that someone should check that out. Also, the existing plan calls for, uh, just less than four and a half feet between the Shadowbrook cable car passing and this window in the wall of this house. Just to put that in perspective, when I was standing here waiting, I estimated that the distance between the rail and the wall there is probably four and a half feet. And that's how close, um, that structure is going to be to this path of travel. We asked for the window to be removed, 'cause, uh, not as though we care about people looking out at it, as the architect mentioned, um, and not really caring too much if people look into it, but I certainly don't wanna get the phone calls at night saying, "Why these people are leaving the elevator and they're kinda making a lot of noise and we can't hear, or we're having a dinner party and it's bothering us." So the more, um, soundproofing that can happen, I think, uh, less problems are gonna be for me and for whoever buys that, buys that house. Um, I'm glad to see that our suggestion of the creeping fig was something that they either will do or had planned to do, as, as he mentioned. And, um, the last thing about the planting, you know, looking again here at this four and a half foot distance, so we're gonna have a tree that's 15 to 20 feet, it's gonna be right in the middle, I guess, of between this railing and that wall. Doesn't leave a lot of room, and I'm concerned that its overhang is gonna overhang our cable car, uh, path of travel, as well as the structure, and should it fall, uh, we will have some serious issues. We've had limbs on the Monterey pine, um, that had to be, uh, removed, uh, just because of safety, uh, concerns, so, um, I hope that we don't create new ones. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't do a whole lot of back and forth between, um, the, the members of the public, but I, if you can respond to those concerns, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you, I'd like to. Uh, yeah, we'll get rid of the window. If, uh, if that's the desires of the Shadowbrook, we'd be happy to get rid of that window. I would talk about the window that's on the north elevation of the living room, if, if they like that. And, uh, I also, um, I'd like to mention about the, um, technique for building the foundation. What I was intending was not to excavate the entire four and a half feet, and, but to not use tiebacks at all, and to trench vertically down before the excavation is done totally, and build a concrete wall with a material called Xypex, which is an integral waterproofing, so it wouldn't need to, to do, um, excavation all the way to the property line. And the, um, it would not put any, um, outward pressure, it would not undermine the, um, the cable car at all, because that wall would go down before the weight is taken off the hill. Of course, all this stuff would be, uh, designed by the structural engineer at the stage of, um, uh, working drawings, and, uh, you know, have structural engineers and geotechnical engineers involved, and we're not gonna do anything that is gonna, you know, cause my client to suffer any kind of loss with the Shadowbrook, uh, trolley going down the hill. We don't want that to happen. But the suggestion about, uh, eliminating the window, I'll go with that. I think that's a good idea.
Questions?
Yeah, I'd like, Bill, can I ask you a question, please?
Certainly.
On the, uh, on the north elevation, the dotted line that shows the depth of the cut?
Yes.
I, I can't find any dimensions for that on the plan. Can you tell me how deep that cut is going to be?
Uh, maybe Courtney.
Do you have an idea?
Courtney, please come up to the microphone, so the people at home can hear you.
I'll try to speak into it this time. Um, I don't know the total, I mean, I guess it depends on where you're taking the measurement from, but the basement level...
From the grade level down to this point here that you're showing your plan, I don't know if that's the bottom of the cut?
Each floor is nine feet.
On this slide, the label north elevation actually cuts away at the very bottom, where you would see the bottom line, but the, um, bottom of the, the basement height is, um, if I remember correctly, a nine foot from floor to floor?
Yeah, each level, each level, floor to floor is nine feet.
And so the line, here.
Go ahead.
So from here down to the bottom is nine feet to the top of the floor, and then whatever's determined necessary for the foundation down there below that, so that would be another nine, so that's about...
Almost 25 feet?
25 feet.
Yeah, so we're not digging a 25-foot-deep hole. Uh, we're not digging, removing the entire, uh, all of the earth for the basement at one time. We'd be, we'd be cutting down a slot into the ground, it'll be about 12 inches wide, 25 feet deep, putting the steel in there, pouring the concrete, and then removing the dirt on the, from the basement side. And because of the construction of the basement and the crosswells, we don't need any tiebacks.
Well, don't you have to remove the dirt all the way up, because the rooms step up? It's not just the basement excavation, it's floor.
No, I mean, all the way up, yes, but I mean, that wall, that, the, the north wall that goes into the ground would go into the ground before the dirt is removed from the basement.
Yeah, I understand that.
So there's no pressure put on the, on the trolley rails.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the, Bill, let me just ask one question before you sit down. The Xypex, is that a new product that takes, um, a specific...
No, it's been around for 40 years.
Okay.
And it's a chemical that's mixed in the, in with the concrete in place of other types of, uh, waterproofing. Very often, we use Xypex in, uh, conjunction with other things in this job. If we need additional, uh, to the Xypex, we could use a, a product called a bentonite sheet, which would, uh, take up about maybe three inches on the outside of the, of the wall also. We might put the bentonite, we'd excavate the 12 inches, uh, trench into the ground, we'd lay this sheet called bentonite up against the dirt on the Shadowbrook side, then we'd pour the remaining amount of the trench full of concrete. And the, uh, Xypex is in the concrete, so there's, what happens, when water tries to go through the concrete, the, uh, chemistry of the Xypex stops it. It's a water-stopping material, and then no water can get in beyond the bentonite anyway, so it's like the best waterproofing you can get. It's what we use when we do high-rise buildings against a property line, just like, it's the same technique that you'd use in, you know, downtown San Francisco or something like that, when you have this situation.
I have one more question for Bill. Has a, a structural engineer participated in any way, shape, or form in the development of this particular plant as of yet?
Not yet, I'm licensed to do the engineering on this kind of a building, so I've not brought in my structural yet, but when we get to that point, we certainly will have structural engineers involved.
Thank you.
I just wanted to return this and, and suggest one question. Uh, would they be, have an objection if they were given a variance to move it five feet? That, uh, because that would solve the landscaping issue also, and, and also just get it a little bit further away from that elevator. Uh, so I, I just throw that out there.
Thank you for that suggestion. Would you like to, to answer to that, or not at this time?
Well, of course, that would be a question for the owner. I don't see how you could do that without changing the property line on the south side of the property, which would remove property from the, uh, Yellow House lot. So moving the property lines around, just because they're currently, uh, I don't believe they're under exactly the same owner, uh, ownership, but I don't know how you could steal land from one lot and add it to the other one in, in order to move a house that seems to be owned by the same family, but...
Okay, thank you, thank you. We'll ask some questions of staff. Um, is there, are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, then we'll close the public, um, portion of the, the discussion and bring it back to the commissioners. Either one of you have questions? Would you like to, who wants to start off?
You know, I've looked at that lot, and I kind of had the same feeling. In fact, I put it in my notes as to one of the issues I wanted to raise was shifting the, the structure over five feet and give it a zero lot line variance on the other side. I mean, that property is basically landscaped, or not landscaped, it's basically natural vegetation in there between Galino's house and the edge of their property line, so I don't think it would infringe upon them. I could entertain that. I don't, I thought the property was under the same ownership, so I also mentioned the other possibility would be a lot line adjustment to give them that additional setback on that side, but, uh, the concern I have, and I have to share this, the feeling, I guess, that both Mike Clark and Ted Burke have, is that, you know, the, the cable car and Shadowbrook is basically an iconic treasure for Capitola, you know? I mean, it's been there since the 1950s, and I just personally don't believe a four and a half foot setback away from that cable car is sufficient enough to protect it. And I could, I just, I see this in the future as just being a major generator of complaints from, uh, from whoever happens to own this house, it's just gonna be, I think, a constant barrage of complaints to Shadowbrook. The other concern I have is the depth of the cut into the hillside, and, uh, personally, I'd like to defer my judgment until I saw a structural engineer's report and a, and some soils test reports on this, uh, particular feature. I think that's pretty much my comment.
TJ?
Well, I would, um, I, I'm empathetic to Ted and Mike, and I appreciate your input in, in, in the process. Um, I don't really share in the concern of the structural compartment, part of it. I, um, I think the architects addressed that, I understand the construction type, what he's doing there, and I, seems sufficient to me. The, um, the noise, it's, it's, whether it's five feet away or 10 feet away, the noise is, would be the primary issue, I think. I don't think it's gonna be so much from the trolley car. It's a pretty quiet car, I, obviously, the, the guests would have a noise thing, but we have that in, in much of our city, so, um, while I'm empathetic to, um, Ted and, and Mike's concerns, I, I really don't see an issue, and I really don't see a, a reason to move the lot line or adjust that over myself. And I, and I think the compromise of the window was, you know, a nice gesture on, on behalf of the, uh, the architect, but, you know, I think it's a, it's a legal lot of sale, it's, it's one of these things that, um, you know, it's a challenge, and I don't think the person of the five feet's gonna take care of it. I don't know, I don't know my, I, I did look at, my wife actually made me look at the coffee berries today to, um, see what that, it's actually a shrub, not a tree, I guess, so, um, whether that's the right, um, shrubbery or brush to put in there for landscaping to defer the view, um, I don't know, but it sounds like they're willing to work with the, uh, the Shadowbrook to make that fit their needs, so, that's really all I have.
Okay. Um, I have some, some concerns that I share with, uh, with Commissioner Ruth about the, um, Shadowbrook is, is a treasure for Capitola, and it's been there for a long time, and that cable car is, is a big part of what makes it work. And, and the, the distance of four feet, I can't quite imagine a whole 12 inches wide and 25 feet deep, and, and that working in, um, during the construction. Um, I'd like to ask a question of staff, and I will show a little bit of my ignorance here, but, um, centering the house more on the lot makes it a zero lot line, so it just moves the house to the, to the lot line on the other side? Even though the house on the lot adjacent to it is setback farther, it just leaves you with a zero setback?
It's 10 and a half feet to the Galino's existing house from that lot line.
Yeah, from the lot line, it's 10, it's set 10 feet back, the, the existing home?
Okay. Um, privacy and noise is something that we fight all the time, and, um, people tend to not remember when they are having issues with, you know, noise at midnight, with people going up and down to the restaurant, um, that they bought a house that was right next door to this visitor-serving facility. Um, and we do get a lot of complaints about the noise from, um, the visitor-serving facility, so I agree with Commissioner Ruth's assessment that this would, the house in its current design would be a, a long-time source for complaints, um, from whoever owns it, whoever lives there, about the noise and about the, the length of time that, um, you know, people are coming in and out of the Shadowbrook. Um, I had another concern about the design of the house, only, it's a beautiful house, and in another location, it would be a wonderful, wonderful home, but with the decks being as open as they are, I think you're gonna have, um, a lot of conflict between the traffic and the cable car going up and down, and people trying to enjoy, just having the quiet enjoyment of that deck, and being out on the deck enjoying a glass of wine. And I don't see there being enough space for the vegetation to really take off and, and, and cover it, although the cable car track seems to run only about halfway down, um, being parallel with the house, so I don't know. Noise travels up, um, and getting on and off the car, and having the people waiting to get on and off the car, that's really where the noise gets generated from the Shadowbrook side. And my final concern has to do with the structural engineering reports. I know that we have approved, um, developments in the past where there were trees that we had concern for. We wanted the trees to survive the construction, and everybody said, "Yes, yes, yes, they will," and surely enough, get into construction, and the root structure of the trees is damaged so that they have to take the trees out. I would be a lot more comfortable seeing some level of structural engineering that says during construction, there's not gonna be undermining of the cable car track, um, understanding the, the construction of the cable car track and the construction of the home and how that's all gonna work. Having an expert in that field say there's absolutely not going to be any undermining of that cable car during construction, um, I don't know if that's something that, that we can, um, continue the item and, and get some more of this information, or not, that might be a, a possible proposal. So those are my comments.
Well, I'm willing to try a motion.
Go for it.
Okay. And I really do like the design, and, uh, you know, it kinda strikes me as a Frank Lloyd Wright-type design. But I would move the project be denied without prejudice, that the applicant be encouraged to return with a, uh, application for a variance to a zero lot line on the, uh, south side of the property, and, uh, that that be accompanied by a structural engineer and a soils engineer report for the...
report for the planning commission to consider.
Do you have a second?
I can't second that.
Can I second that?
Yes, I can.
I'll second that. So, with the motion, and we have a second, do we have to do a roll call vote, or?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
No.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Chair, Acting Chair Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries two one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to do it.
I agree.
I mean, I like the house, bring it back, set it back a little further, protect the cable car.
Our final item on tonight's agenda is at 305 Fanmar Way, it's 13-026. Plan revision to a previously approved design permit for remodel in addition to a single-family dwelling in an R1 single-family residence zoning district. Property owner Peter Wilk, Representative Peter Wilk, staff report, please.
Okay, thank you. Before you tonight is a design, is a modification to a design permit at 305 Fanmar Way. During the construction, just following the first look at framing, I was asked to go out on site and take a look at the work that had been done to date, and Mr. Wilk had asked me to give him a list of what else had to be addressed before a final review, which it wasn't ready for final yet. But when I got out on the site, I realized that the, there were modifications between the approved set of plans and what had been built on site. Those changes include a change to the exterior materials. I've passed around an exterior elevation for you that was originally submitted as the materials board. Hardy board shingles were proposed originally, and what was installed was a hardy lap siding. So, the original plans were to take off the existing siding there and replace it with a similar siding, because the original siding was shingle, but wood. There were also changes between the approved set of plans and the window dimensions in some locations, also changes to the railings. Originally, the plan was to keep the original railings that are along the side facade, and then also change to the garage door. And you've all received a printed version of Mr. Wilk's letter, or email that was sent this week, and you received the email previously this week. I have each elevation here for you to reference tonight in the discussion. This is the north elevation, these are taken out of the staff report attachment. So, you'll see the existing, the approved, and then as-built. The one in our recommendation tonight, we, in reviewing this, the change to the garage door on this front facade, we felt that there wasn't any character in the new door that was designed compared to the carriage-style design that was approved, so staff's recommendation includes changing out that garage door, and Mr. Wilk spoke to that in his letter as well. And another change on this facade is the dimensions of the front window. This is the side elevation to the east. It's difficult to see from the right-of-way, so the changes along this side were not visible from the right-of-way. I think there was a proposed change in one of the windows that did not take place. And, this is the west elevation, which is visible from the right-of-way, the driveway area is next to this, so there, it makes itself more visible to the adjacent neighbors and people walking by. There were changes to the size of the windows on this elevation, as well as the railing. So, as you can see, the railing that was put in matches the hardy board lap siding. And this is the rear elevation, which you can see the as-built, there was a glass that was put in on the top floor, rather than the original railing that was proposed within the plans, so. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the exterior modifications to the original plans, less the modification to the garage door on the front, because it's very visible to folks walking by. Thank you.
Do you have a rear elevation? Did you just show a rear?
The last rear.
Yeah, do you have another? My question is, have the doors been changed out on the back? I couldn't quite see from, there was a lot of material on those two decks, and so I couldn't really see the doors, but it looks like they were supposed to be changed out, and doesn't, it didn't look to me as though they had been.
I'll have to refer to the applicant on that one.
Okay, we can ask the applicant.
Chair, I have one question. Katie?
Yes.
Excuse me. You may have said this, and I may have missed it. The existing is, represents what?
Represents before construction.
Okay.
So, that was before construction and then approved, is the set of plans that was approved by the planning commission?
Thank you.
No, the only, the only question I had, and I think you just clarified it for me, was the upper deck is gonna be glass, no railing. I thought, I was making the assumption that it wasn't done when the picture was taken, but it's actually glass panels.
It's glass panels.
And it looked to me as though the enclosure for the trash is a little bit lower than was approved, by about two feet or so lower, and I don't know if I'm wrong, and it does look lower, and I...
It does appear lower.
No, I don't know if there's a neighbor here who might have a problem with that, or whatever, but, okay. All right, any other questions to staff?
I was just gonna say, this seems to be a recurring problem. You know, we had the house on 47, then we had the house up on Central, and now we've got this place, and I think the reason it keeps reoccurring is because we have no teeth to respond to these things. And, I'd like to propose to the city council that we adopt an ordinance, that if you don't build your house according to the approved plan, you have to pay a substantial monetary fine. And if you want to return the, let me put it this way, you pay the fine if you want to keep the house as-built, or you can return it to its original approved plan without paying the fine. I think we need to put some teeth in our approval process here, because, you know, this is the, this is the third house in the past 10 months that we've seen this happen, and it's, you know, it's occurring too often for me to be considering now it's a mistake. I think we approve a plan, and people just go ahead and do what the hell they want to do, and build what they want to build, and say, oh, we know the planning commission's going to make the changes and approve it.
Well, you know, I think you do have some teeth. I mean, you could, you do have the authority not to approve the modifications, which would leave the owner in the position of either changing the project out or not getting their certificate of occupancy. So, there's always that option.
Yeah. Personally, I'm tired of people not doing what we've approved and just going off and doing what they want to do.
Well, I understand that changes happens during construction, and I, I mean, I think that's probably pretty typical, but I guess, again, my concern is, I can see how the siding is the last part before the final, and maybe that didn't get caught, but how does a window sizes not get caught during the framing inspection?
Window sizes should be caught during framing. They were observed, the decision was made that those in and of themselves didn't represent a significant change. Whether or not the commission agrees with that's another matter. But the siding, the things like the exterior treatments, we really don't have an opportunity to see that until we go out for final inspection, short of setting up some citywide construction monitoring program, which we really aren't staffed to do. So, there is an opportunity for a homeowner to change the exterior materials and the appearance of a house, and we don't know any better until we get out there and it's already up and installed. So, it is somewhat of a difficult situation. We've tried to change the conditions to make it more clear to property owners, as you recall. This applicant did not benefit from that. He was approved prior to that change. We have talked about having them sign an acknowledgement before they get their building permit, that any changes, and, you know, you're gonna have to, you know, suffer the consequences potentially.
I think putting it on the plans is a good thing, because then the contractor sees it as well, and a, you know, and they'll hopefully...
And that was a change we made to our conditions, as you recall, here a couple months ago. Again, this project didn't benefit from it. I don't know that any of that's gonna be a panacea. I mean, we're hopeful that these things will help, but, you know, we look back, and there's probably something that's been happening for quite a while, and I, my impression is that previous changes were signed off, and the commission didn't hear about them. What I've heard from the commission is you do want to see them. So, we're bringing them forward, and it's, it's not comfortable, but, you know, we're trying to deal with it.
You know, the bottom line is, there's, there's one reason the planning commission exists, and that's to protect the community from people doing whatever they feel like they want to do. And if people are allowed to go ahead and do whatever they want to do, we don't even need to be here. That's the bottom line.
You know, I'm just wondering about the inspection comments, because whenever, we've done a lot of remodels, both in our business and our homes, and it just seems to me, the building department is there every single week, whether there's an inspection or not, they're always roaming around, and they see their eyes, they have eyes in the back of their head.
You're right, they're around town. I mean, it's a small city, so when they're doing their inspections, chances are they might drive by your place as well. What they don't generally have is a set of plans, they don't stop and inspect to see that everything's being built according to approved plans. Some things, obviously, would jump out at you, size of a window, or the color of the siding. Generally, those aren't things that they're gonna notice just driving by if it's per the approved plans.
Isn't there a requirement for the plans to be available on-site, so if they stop, there are plans there that they can look at?
Yes.
Okay. And in this case, it's not the color of the siding that changed, it was the whole nature of the siding.
Right.
And having been through that change myself, and go through the public hearing and changing from shingle to lap and back to shingle, I mean, it's a, it's a process, but I don't know of any contractors that do any business around here that don't know you're supposed to do that. And you have to order the siding a long time before you put it up. Well, let's, let's let the applicant have a chance. Let's open the public hearing and let the applicant have his, have his say about this. Mr. Wilk, would you like to come up and speak with us?
Yes, I'm Peter Wilk. I'm the owner of 305 Fanmar, and I'm surprised, actually, at the, at the comments from the board, because this is my third time in front of the group, and I've been trying to bend over backwards, and in my humble opinion, I've never, you know, I'm not a contractor, I, this is my first remodel, and have tried to, you know, be consistent with what the community desired. There's, there's no other, you know, neighbors complaining about the garbage enclosure, or the way it looks to the house. They've been very complimentary, frankly. With regards to changes, my comments are that, frankly, I didn't think that the board was interested in that level of detail. The changes that were made, like that window that you see right there, I thought that was, that was a slam dunk. The window that was there was, was so low, you can open a car door and break it. It was a safety hazard. It looked bizarre, in my opinion, the same with the other window, and so when I submitted the plans, I was under the, obviously, false impression that the board would be interested in sightlines, general dimensions, ordinances, you know, and not those kinds of details. If I would have known that ahead of time, and, you know, I hired an architect who's from the area, and didn't get that impression at all that, that those kinds of detail, in fact, you know, we talked about this several times and said, you know, I'm not gonna use those railings, you know, and he's, you know, the impression I got, anyway, was, well, we'll just redline the drawings as we go. So, had I known that this was going to be an issue, I would have stopped, and personally, I wouldn't even use the architect, I would have redlined the drawings and say, well, my best estimate is here's what I really, really want to do. When we talked about changing materials, I thought we were talking about changing from wood shingles to cement board. I mean, I stayed with the same material. It is the same material, it's a different style. So, I apologize, but blame my ignorance. I certainly had no intention of pulling wool over anybody's eyes, or doing anything but being a good neighbor. Regards to the garbage enclosure height, again, it's not called out on the drawing what the height is, there's pictures on the drawings, but the dimensions don't call out those things, they're just shadowed in. Here, yeah, we got to put in a garbage enclosure, meaning I'm assuming that is left up to the redline, if you will. And so, I did what I thought covered the sightlines, I made sure it was plenty higher than the garbage cans, so no one could see it, et cetera. And that was the attitude I took throughout. I mean, the garage door is not called out on the drawing. There is no carriage door call out on the door and window schedule. If you look at it, it's silent. So, again, the garage was kind of an afterthought. This model is, remodel was primarily for room expansion and the roof deck, or the master bedroom deck, and everything else was kind of like an add-on, at least in my mind. So, the garage door, I take exception with the staff report saying it's not consistent with the neighborhood, there's exact same garage doors, two doors down, the neighborhood is filled with roll-up garage doors, very similar, so I was surprised that suddenly this was, you know, a topic of controversy. I just completely, I continually be surprised at the fact that I can't seem to get this right. This is, again, my third time behind, in front of the board, so, you know, I would appreciate your consideration, and hopefully I won't have to come before the board again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Other questions?
I have one. If you didn't like the windows, and you didn't like the railings, and you didn't like the siding, and you didn't like the garage door, why would you even submit a plan that contained all those features?
Because at that point, my architect and I had spent all the money that was in the budget, and, you know...
But you were a part of the process, and the design, has it evolved, correct?
The communication between me and my architect was strained, that's why I didn't continue to use him when I went into construction. And I had strained in the sense that it was very difficult to communicate, you know, we just, so, when I did get drawings, I found many errors, I submitted the changes, half of them wouldn't get implemented. I finally realized, when I talked, I did talk to a contractor and...
So, you tossed in the towel and submitted a plan that you didn't like all these features on?
Well, I talked to the construction guy who I did hire, my contractor, and he said, all the inspector is gonna really care about is ordinance and safety issues, and the rest of this is detail. And the impression I got from the first meeting, when I was in front of you guys, was that you were worried about, again, sightlines, and, again, something like, it just didn't occur to me that something like the style of the railing, which even with my architect, again, I said, well, I'm not gonna, that stuff's not even the code, I can't leave that there. He said, yeah, well, you'll, you know, and that was something I was gonna build. I said, well, okay, you just do that. So, you know, I feel like maybe it was led down the garden path from my architect, to a certain extent, because I'm surprised that this is, this is an issue. I mean, and I understand where you're coming from, and it's your job, but it's, frankly, it's my ignorance, and it's surprising to me, and it's certainly not my intention to do anything that would be counter to the goodwill of the community.
Other questions or comments?
I have one question. Would you consider a roll-up door that looked like a carriage door on the garage?
I'll do anything that's directed, understand that this has been a very expensive project for me, I'm over, already over budget, and, again, I would appeal to the board that, you know, what would be acceptable? If I put in a, put in a carriage-style door, will I come back in again next month and say, I'm sorry, that's not good enough? I can't anticipate the taste of the fashion police. You know, all I could do is I say, pick something that was consistent with the neighborhood. I've got extra pictures, if you'd like to look at them, of the garage doors around the neighborhood.
Are there any other questions? I have one question about the windows. It called out for gelled wien vinyl windows. Are those the windows that you ended up?
No, I installed Milgard.
Those are Milgard windows?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And, oh, by the way, the, you asked the question earlier about the sliding doors that you couldn't see on the, the elevation, they, they have been replaced.
Just in the last week?
No, no, no.
Because I, what I saw on this was that they looked kind of like these windows with the, with the true, or with the divided light on the top of them in the plans, but that's not what I saw, that I couldn't see too well. Do they have divided light? Are they exactly what the plans showed?
No, they're, they're Milgard windows and, um...
Doors?
The Milgard door, well, there's, there's, there's the two front, there's the downstairs French door, or the slider, it's not a French door, it's a slider. There's a downstairs window that was replaced, actually, two downstairs stairs, windows that were replaced. The upstairs sliders, um, are, are clear, um, and that was changed because of, again, onsite decision, that, that putting those, um, panes in there would obscure the view.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Commissioner, comments?
I have none. I, I do have a question for staff, maybe. Um, you had recommended to accept, with the current size, with the exception of the garage door, what were you looking for them to do in terms of the garage door?
I was just thinking that the garage door, they had proposed, but a roll-up could work.
Okay, that had a carriage-style roll-up.
Carriage-style roll-up, yeah.
I'm, I'm willing to make some comments at this point. Commissioner?
I only want to make one, and that is, I was looking at the conditions, and I know that we just changed the conditions, um, relative to this, to tighten them up, but the conditions when we approved this clearly called out exterior appearance, as if the exterior appearance changes, it needs to come back. And our new condition just says significant change, and I'd like to see it go back so that exterior appearance is clearly written on the plans, on the permit, everywhere, so if they change what it's going to look like, it comes back.
Um, I agree about the, um, the door, the, a carriage door doesn't have to open out. They, there are some beautiful ones that are wood and, they're all over the community, and I believe there is a couple in your neighborhood that go straight up. It doesn't have to be a true carriage door. I would, I will advocate for that change. I will also advocate, can we see a, a west elevation? I will also advocate for the siding being changed and especially, um, the, the siding that is on the, um, it's a little kind of a breezeway, a walkway. I, I believe that should go back to, I, I believe it should basically, with the exception of the windows, go back to what we approved. Um, I, I wouldn't advocate changing out the windows, but, but the garage door and the siding and the railings, I think, need to be what we approved. I believe that the details of homes in our community are what define this community. They are the reason people want to move to this community, because it has charming architecture, very detailed articulated architecture. And when we begin to allow finances toward the end of a job to, uh, direct the exterior, I mean, we all run out of money on jobs. So what we do is we, we don't buy the most expensive stove, or we, you know, it's, it happens inside, not outside, because the outside of the home is, is a reflection on the whole community. And I believe if we, we are, we are running down a really slippery slope if we allow finances to dictate at the last minute, at the, at the 11th hour, the exterior of our buildings. It's, it's a bad precedent, and we've already, I think we're already getting a rep for allowing it, and I think we need to put the brakes on it now. And I'm sorry, Mr. Wilk, that, you know, if this does get a, you know, if it goes my way, that you're going to be the person it has to happen to, but we're seeing it far too often. People are just basically changing what they want because they can't afford it. And it, it, that, that doesn't work for our community. There's people in your neighborhood who've, who've put a lot of money into their homes over the last few years. New homes have been built, they're beautiful, they're beautifully built. The details of the outside are beautiful. We owe it to the people who are already in this community to keep the value of their neighborhood up. That's part of our job, that's how I see it.
I would agree with you 100%. I think we approved a plan that added some character to this structure and we ended up with a plain Jane building.
We ended up with something that looks like it's in, um, a sketchy neighborhood in Santa Fe.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
I was trying to be nice. So I will entertain a motion. Or other comments?
I would support your motion if you, if you, your comments, if you put that in the form of a motion.
All right, I move that we instruct the applicant to redo the siding on the house to the original on the plan, all of the railings to the original on the plan, and the garage door to the original on the plan.
Second.
Allowing, that's right.
I'm sorry.
I think that's enough.
I'll second the motion.
Before we vote, I just want to make one comment because I'm really sorry that, that this is, is, is happening on this project, but I agree with the comments. And I tend to look at it from the perspective of, would I have approved this if the plans had come in like this upfront? And I have to say, there would have been some negotiation right up front if they'd come in this way, because, um, it's a very visible location in, you know, the heart of, of the character of Capitola.
I, I guess, um, my concern is this, I, I, I share the frustration of, now this is the third time in my short term here of having a, a home come back that's different than what was approved. Again, I think the city is partially, uh, and I can't say the blame here, but part of that, because, again, the window change was done, um, at the site, knowing that it had changed, and, and the city wasn't a accomplice to that, agreed to that. And I, it's not that I'm opposed to our staff being able to make that decision, it's something we need to negotiate if we don't like them having that level of, uh, authority to do that. I agree with Commissioner Smith that I would look at it from the point of view, would I approve it under these conditions? And I, I've seen us approve houses that probably have as less character as this one, if that's the way you want to characterize it. I, I wouldn't want to make any assertions of what neighborhood it comes from or anything else, but, um, I, for me, I think really the concern, if I was going to make changes, the hardy board is hardy board. I don't know what the difference in cost is, but from a shake hardy board or shingle hardy board to solid plank, but it's got to be similar, I would think. So I can't see cost being there. The, the concern I would have is the railing, I think, really stands out as being something that really does change the looks of the, um, the structure, not having the railing that was originally detailed. Um, I think the garage door with the carriage style, whether to roll up or pulls out, makes a difference as, as well. The hardy plank itself, um, I probably would have gone with it either way if some of these other details were gone, so really I have some, um, you know, difficulty making a decision to replace all the hardy plank, uh, based on, um, the terms that were discussed.
The applicant would like to speak, and I, I would like to give you that opportunity.
So what I'd like to do is, is having, uh, but two of the members mentioned that, um, they like to look at this as, would they approve it if it came in like this? I would like an opportunity to modify the plans with the existing, uh, planking in there, but to add the charm or the detail and come back, uh, to the board with a different set of plans that perhaps would be more consistent, um, with the charm of the neighborhood, if you will. And, and, uh, to, to attack this problem in that manner, rather than just preemptively coming back and say, saying, "Go back to where we were." I'd like to stay where we are and go forward as opposed to go backwards.
What is the commission's pleasure?
I think that's a, a reasonable request, given the amount of changes that we're looking at. If, if he takes and comes back with railings and, and character that we could approve, it won't set us back anything but time.
The only thing that I am concerned, and I'm leaning towards it as well, but the only thing I'm concerned about is that, um, now we're giving the message that, uh, someone can come back over and over again and negotiate with us. And that not only takes our time, which is no big deal, but it takes our staff time. And, uh, I don't know that that would be something that we would charge the applicant for, it would be something that the applicant would be charged for a resubmission of, so that's, that's not a, not an issue. I'm just a little worried about this negotiating, um, back and forth, and, and, and having people think that they can, um, you know, argue the, the smaller issues. And it just, it just feels like it's a, it's a, it's not a good way to design buildings.
The predominant feature on this house, or the predominant design feature for me, is the shingles type siding rather than the plank siding. I mean, that's what adds some depth and, and character to this house. You know, if we're just going to get some window treatment and a garage door, I don't...
And the other thing that happened was, these windows are really, really inexpensive windows. They're, they're very, you know, you can see that it's not a true divided light, it's, you know, they're the clip-in kind, and, um, it, it, it doesn't add a lot of richness or character to the appearance of the house. Size-wise, I mean, I think the windows, we can let the windows go, that's a lot of money to change out, but I, I'm, I don't think we, I don't think we do Capitola any favors by, by negotiating at this point.
My only concern, and I just, I just feel that I need to say this, um, the incidents that we've seen this happen have been incidents with, um, I think, a situation where the architect and the owner have a strained relationship, and the owner doesn't realize that what's in those plans cosmetically and detailed is what's being approved, and they don't get to make any changes afterward. Because in, in at least two of the cases that I went back and looked at today, it's the same architect, and it's the same, I mean, one of them just said, "That's not what I wanted." And I've, I've seen that before, and I hate to have the owner get penalized for hiring the wrong architect. The contractors ought to be able to stand up and say, you know, "If you're going to change the siding, you got to go back to the planning commission, somebody's got to, somebody's got to say that." Staff, when they go out and they do their inspection, somebody's got to say that and make sure that they understand that. So that's, that's my only, as far as negotiating, and I do completely agree with you, it's a bad precedent to set.
But if you had all these features in a plan that you didn't like, wouldn't you change those before you'd submit the plan? That's the part I have a hard time justifying. I mean, I, I find it difficult to believe that an applicant can be that naive.
Well, having lived through the siding situation myself personally, um, as the owner, I was willing to accept something that I hated because I'm married to a guy that wanted the material. And when I found that I could have what I wanted cosmetically with the material, I put the skids on everything and said, "You got to stop." My contractor came in and said, "Okay, it's going to cost you a month." And I said, "Pay the month, I want what I want." There are some, and I didn't hire an architect because I didn't want to have the argument with the architect over those kinds of details. I, my contractor knew that I had to, it was going to cost me a month. I don't know if everybody knows that.
Maybe we could do this, I would, I would offer a suggestion, and I, I understand the frustration of the commission. Again, I think, um, that our, our director over here pointed out that we have now made some changes in our conditions and the way we, um, put those towards the individual who's pulling the permit, which, um, Mr. Wilk did not, uh, have that opportunity to have that. I would make, make the suggestion that maybe we do table this until, um, he brings us back. And with that, that we ask staff to actually do have a signature on the line that says any exterior changes, so that we don't get caught in this again. And I, I think we give Mr. Wilk a benefit to see what he could do as far as adding some character to the house and something maybe that the commission could live with, without, um, you know, putting him in a position where it's an unaffordable situation for him. Not that, um, you know, I, I, I don't want to make accusations and assumptions about naivety and, and who should have known what, and, and those type of things. It's, it's an unfortunate situation, and it, and I, and I do share in the same frustration. But maybe we could, uh, try on our side from the city of making sure that at least we've given the occupant notice by a signature that any changes in the future, we wouldn't, we would not tolerate this type of thing, and, uh, let Mr. Wilk have the benefit of a month to bring it back to us with some changes.
Can we also add a, a condition that the owners sign the plans when a permit is issued, acknowledging that they understand that any changes to those plans, any modifications, come back to the planning commission, so that we know it's not...
I think Commissioner Welsh is saying an actual letter, or, you know, it's something that's even more, uh, well, or maybe it's a letter that can go on the plans, like a stamp that, that makes him have to sign it and the contractor have to sign it.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's different forms of that. Some agencies will have, um, you know, some kind of application, uh, agreement or acknowledgement where the applicant signs, acknowledging they understand all the conditions, and if they have to build it per plan, and if they agree to abide by those conditions. And that, that would be pretty easy for us to cook up and add into our permit process. So, um, you know, I think we could have something like that ready in the next month or two for our customers. You know, in, in terms of the issue, what I'm hearing, I think it's clear that the commission does have a high standard. Um, I suspect the applicant has heard that loud and clear. I would recommend that, you know, I think at the end of the day, we want to get a project that represents what you initially approved and which, you know, fits in aesthetically with the rest of the community. I, I would generally recommend, given the applicant, an opportunity to make some changes, uh, come back, and hopefully he can present something that would be acceptable to the commission. And if not, we can always go down the, the other road of having them change it back completely.
I'd like to say, if that's what the commission desires to do, we do have a current motion on the floor, I would like to have that motion remain on the floor until that meeting, and have the possibility to react to that motion at that meeting if we don't like the revised plans that are submitted.
Yeah, you can do that, you can continue it, and, and we can bring it back in a month or two and, um, let Mr. Wilk present an option to remedy it.
And this would be prior to, to occupancy?
Correct.
May I ask Mr. Wilk a question? Are, are you or anyone else living full or part-time in the house at this time?
No, we do visit it. We were there over Christmas, for example.
So you come for vacations?
Yes.
Thank you.
Since I'm at the podium, I could, if I could ask an option to be, um, if you do approve this recommendation, um, that, that I have the option of, of maybe having two months as opposed to just one. So I would like to be here in a month and, and do this again, but I'm not sure I can pull it together that quickly.
Where do you live, Mr. Wilks?
Mellow. Mellow Park.
Okay.
Thank you.
So occupancy is not really a hammer in this situation. It's not a hardship for him to hold occupancy over his head, because clearly they're occupying it whenever they want to occupy it. So I think we need to realize that. I don't know if we need to do anything about it, but I think we need to realize that that's really not a hammer. And, um, I, I, you know, I don't even know what else to say about that, it's just true.
So do we table the motion?
You know, I hate...
I'd almost like to vote on it.
I, I, I really, I'm really, really upset that I have to be put in this position to defend Capitola, the look of Capitola like this. It's not something that we like to do, this is not what, what we want to be doing either. But I feel real strongly about this. I, I feel like people are dumbing down their projects for money, and they're getting away with it. And we've got to send out a message that says you can't do that in Capitola.
Yeah, I think I'm going to call for the question. We have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
I'm going to call for the question.
Can we have a roll call?
Can we read the motion back again, please, first? Can we read the motion back again, please, first?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to have the plan returned with the originally approved siding, railings, and, I just lost it, garage door, based on the original plans, but not the windows. Thank you.
But it wasn't to have the plan returned, it was to have the owner make those changes.
Have the owners make the changes reflecting the approved garage door railing and siding.
So, that's shingled siding, carriage-style door, roll-up is fine, and railings on that west elevation?
Yeah, on the west elevation, I think that the back elevation is not as critical.
West.
Commissioner Welch?
No.
Commissioner Ruth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm gonna have to say aye.
Chairman Ortiz? Motion carries three to one.
All right. Mr. Wilk, I'm sorry, you're put in this position, believe me, we don't enjoy this at all. You have the ability to appeal this to the city council, and you may do so if you care to. So, that concludes that application, that is the last of the public hearings for tonight. Are there any Commissioner communications?
No, I mentioned that Commissioner Graves has been hospitalized for a number of days and weeks, and hopefully he's on the road to recovery, and will be back with us at the next meeting.
I wish so too. Anybody else? So, we're, we're really wanting to have the staff come back to us on these changes that we have asked for, so that we don't have this happen again, and we figure out a way in this economy and in this day and age, which, you know, I think it has happened in the past, but I don't think it's happened with this frequency or with this, these drastic changes. So, yes, window size is important to us, and just about everything on the exterior is important to the city, to, I think, to all the residents of the city, which is, which is who we're representing. Anything else I want to talk about? No, that's all. Thank you, that concludes tonight's meeting, and we are adjourned to the meeting of February 6th, 7:00 p.m. here.
Director's report?
Oh, Director's report.
This list actually gives us a great start to healing ADD, no matter what your type. Limit TV and video games, walk outside in nature for 45 minutes, five to six times a week. Multiple studies show that exercise helps ADD, especially in nature. Work on fixing your sleep, which is a common ADD battle. Hypnosis, meditation, magnesium, and melatonin can help. Eliminate caffeine and nicotine, short-term these substances may help, but long-term you'll feel a lot more ADD. Plus, it's critical to get your diet right. Your brain uses 25% of the calories you consume, and a fast-food diet will give you a fast-food ADD mind. More on this in a bit. And, type-specific supplements or medications that we discussed. So many of the patients who come to see us want to be off their medication. I usually tell them that's a bad goal. The goal should always be your best functioning, not to be on or off medication. If you can do it without medication, great, and we'll show you the best natural treatment. But if it doesn't work, then medication can be helpful. But as we've said, it needs to be targeted to your type. Let me also be clear, that medication-only treatment, which is what most ADD people ever get, is bad treatment. You also need to get your diet, exercise, and behavioral strategies right, as they can significantly lower any medication you might need.
There are multiple studies connecting food dyes, additives, and pesticides to ADD, as well as studies that show getting rid of certain foods can make a big difference. Two studies from Holland show that eliminating gluten, corn, dairy, soy, and food dyes significantly improved. This is really important. More than 70% of the ADD kids.
That's amazing. Here are some of our rules for healing ADD through food. It seems that most doctors want to Medicaid first, but are...